Okay. We're gonna have a call to order, please. We met in closed session. We have a quorum, so let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll begin tonight looking for approval of the minutes from the May -- oh, I'm sorry. May 1st, 2017 Special Workshop Meeting, May 1st, 2017 Board Reorganization Workshop Meeting. And we'll do this separately because --
I was curious about that.
Yeah, we can split them up.
So let's go for these first two. I will -- I'm going to take the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee off the approval of minutes for the moment. Do we have an approval for the May 1st meetings?
I move that we approve the minutes for the May 1st meeting.
Thanks, Terry.
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike.
Terry Pavicich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye. Motion carries. So let's talk about the May 10th Parent Teacher Advisory Committee.
Sure.
Yeah, so we, on May 10th, over at Donner South in the library, we had, I think it was around right under 40 parents that joined us for the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee. Nancy was with us and a number of administrators and staff. And we went through kind of an agenda presentation of SB 100 data, kind of capturing from what we talked about from last year, presented some data, talked a little bit about Positively North and Mustang Way and how we use the data for the discipline and improving our programming. And then we broke into facilitated groups that are staff-led, captured thoughts of the parents that were with us. Overall, I think a really positive night. Also sent out a survey after because we had to readjust our timing a little bit. So, sent out a survey to the parents just to get a quick -- that attended, just to get some insights into how they felt with the night. And we can give you more details on that later since the survey is still active, but as of today, there was 13 responses. And one of the categories that we asked about was the value of the meeting, and we had 11 of 13 said it was high value, and the other two said it was moderate value. So, yeah, I thought it was overall was a good night.
I thought it was a really good night. We had broke into small groups that were facilitated by different administrators, and a lot of parents had a lot of really pointed questions. And I thought that they did a really good job answering, and if not answering them, documenting what those questions were or suggestions were to take bad for further study. Yeah.
So I'm just curious, why are we approving the minutes as a board?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Because it's a board committee?
Because it's a board committee?
It was --
Like a policy.
Like a policy.
With just one board member present.
Yeah.
You know, all my service on the Policy Committee, meaning I don't remember approving minutes from our -- have we at this meeting?
Not at this meeting. No, it's a Policy Committee meeting.
Right. It's done there.
It meets annually, and so in order to post the minutes online that we've had the meeting.
I see.
This is last year as well.
Okay.
It's a weird one.
It is weird.
I will assure you that the notes, the minutes, are reflective of the --
Let's just --
Yeah, no, I know. I understand.
Depending on you to tell us that.
I understand.
We brought Karen and Scott.
Yeah. Well, we were going to come back too and give you a little bit more fun once we collect all the feedback and, you know, the facilitated groups that were those small groups recorded a lot of information that we just haven't processed yet. So we'll be happy to share that too.
Well, we can -- why don't we hold this? We'll hold it for now, and we'll go from there. Okay, moving on to the first reception of visitors. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote tonight. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent. The parent feedback offered at the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee meeting, is there anything?
Any more you'd like to share?
Yeah, I think we just bring back more information.
They just did that, yeah.
Karen was there too, but I mean, it was, I think we captured it.
Okay.
Discipline code revisions.
I'll turn this over to Scott as well.
Yeah, and I'm going to turn it over to Karen. So every year, we go through our student handbook to look at our discipline codes and the language we use that the board then does approve on. So Karen was just going to kind of take us through. It's a kind of a quick one. We don't have a lot of updates this year, but we are still going to present that to you.
Sure. So one of the provisions of SB 100, which is actually now called Public Act 99456, but still most widely known as SB 100, requires the elimination of zero tolerance language in your discipline code. And so this is just some revisions to get us fully compliant with that. Much of that had been already revised, but there were still a few pieces in category B of our discipline code that had kind of an if-then scenario. And so the revisions that are documented there offer more, kind of a wider scope of options for a discipline that deans can use should an offense occur.
And like I said, it was really quick. We really, that's all we really had was the quick changes to just reflect that, so. But it is something that you, you know, that the board has to approve, so.
It was one of those last year, it was real easy to --
Yep.
We had a lot more.
To find the ones that were clear zero tolerance, but as we then tried to execute the discipline code, this year, we ran into a few that, as Karen said.
Exactly.
Were if-then, and the then kind of felt like there was not a range of options. It felt like zero tolerance. So this cleans that language up.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, let's move on to the late start change for 2017 and 18. Thank you both.
Thanks.
Get my document here. The kids seem to like this.
So we sent out the last, the last step that we had in this was surveying students and families, parents, community members, about the idea of late starts. Jill and I worked on the survey and circulated it, and we had a large amount of responses, over 2,000 responses. 58% from students and 42% from students, or from, sorry, 58% from students and 42% from parents. 80% of it saw the benefit of the change to be a more consistent schedule, which is something that we did hear over and over again over the course of the years. We talked about late starts. I would say you could categorize, the feedback is varied, but the majority of it leaned towards positive or constructive in nature. Like, I like this idea, but 10:00 AM would be better, or Wednesdays would be better, or, you know, so not really a lot there challenging or saying, "Don't do this." There also wasn't a lot of things brought up that we hadn't already considered internally in the staff work that we had done. And that was really a core piece of reaching out to students and parents was to provide us maybe some perspective that we couldn't see from the inside, was something being brought to us that we just, we couldn't see from where we were standing. There was only one piece that was raised, which was some transportation concerns, which may exist even without late starts. So we're, you know, it gave us a new look at some transportation stuff, and we're investigating some of that with the bus company, whether or not we changed late starts or anything. This is a good one for us to investigate, but we think that that would meet one of the needs that was raised through the survey. After we've gone through everything, we really believe that for students and families, there's a consistency factor here that provides them a great advantage to our current schedule. We think for teaching and learning, this provides our staff an opportunity to respond to student needs in more real time. When they're meeting on a weekly basis, looking at student performance, having a chance to talk through what's happening through their instruction, how students' needs are changing based on that, and then being able to respond to it almost immediately is a far greater way to understand and meet student needs. Right now, the way that the model is, is you could find out that a student is struggling, and by the time you have the team together, talk through what you might need to do with it, it could be two weeks or four weeks later, which is not timely in where I sit. So if we can look week at, at least one week at a time, at how we can improve, I think that constant growth model that we're looking for with our students is the same thing we want with our teaching practice, which is why I'm recommending that we move forward next year with Monday late starts, every Monday when we're in session, so all of the holidays are out, starting after Labor Day. Gives us a couple of weeks to get into the, plus, you gotta have, you gotta know things about your students before you start talking about how you change things. So we won't know that in the first week of school. And that, that would run through the end of the school year.
And one of the benefits of Mondays was that, because we have Mondays when we don't have school in session, we would actually have fewer missed hours of instructional --
Yeah, we see a lot of benefits on the Monday. If we went every Wednesday, it would shift, it would increase, it would literally double the number of late start occurrences. By moving it to Mondays, we have a bunch of holidays and Wednesdays. That reduces the number of late starts. Mondays are also a disruptive day because of those holidays, so you're not disrupting another day in the week. One of the things we did hear from talking to staff were late start days that occurred the same week as Monday's off were really awkward to, you know, come to school on Tuesday and then have a shortened day on Wednesday, and, you know, so, and the majority of our holidays actually fall on Mondays, so you don't end up with a double disturbed week because of scheduling this way. So it has a lot of advantages to it. It allows you to ease into the week. We see a lot of pros with this change.
Is that going to give you enough time, enough Mondays then, to do what you want to do?
It definitely increases the number based on what we have now. It does increase the total amount of time by seven hours in total over the course of the year, so it's a little more time. But the frequency piece is what's important, is just the rhythm of that occurring.
Okay.
Do we have to add a day by law?
No, because our day is longer than the average school day, or the required school day, and what the state allows us to do is bank minutes, so we can, we go more than we're supposed to on all the other days, and that banks time for the day when it's shorter. But that's kind of procedurally why today, what I'm about to ask you for is a strong thumbs up or thumbs down on this, because then we need to take this and put it into the state system, and then it spits back out a calendar and says, "You're good with your number of minutes." But we're hesitant to make that official kind of move before I know that we can move forward with this. So I'm about to ask for kind of a strong straw poll, so that when I come back with that official calendar that's been run through the state system, and I come back in June with that, that I will have a sufficient number of votes to make that official. We would like to start communicating with families. If the board says you're comfortable moving with this, beginning tomorrow, with staff tomorrow, so that everybody knows going out of this school year what to expect for next year. We'll even post a draft calendar with this change in it, and then it'll become the official calendar once the state approves it, or the state system approves it, so. Any other questions?
Okay, so this is not an official vote, but can we have a show of support or not support? At two, three, four, five, six, seven, no, so it looks like a good one to me. Okay, thank you.
So I will move forward, and we'll communicate with fam. We started preparing that today, so we'll get it out tomorrow. This is our plan for next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next is the recommended calendar.
This is after, you remember last year, we changed our calendar to the earlier start. Some of the feedback that we received from staff was that that was not as transparent as a process as they would have liked, not as many people were involved in it. So this time, we made it very transparent. We formed a large committee.
That's surprising. I just have to say, that's --
It's perspective.
Okay. Still, that's surprising to me. Okay.
So we formed a very large committee this time across the district, and then as each committee, as we met in committee each time, we communicated out broadly with the staff each step along the way. So we set our priorities around building a calendar, and we sent that out to the staff. As we built each draft, that went out to the staff. So everybody's been able to see very transparently along the way, the priorities we used in building the schedule and then, or the calendar, and each version of it as it came. This is our final draft that came out of that committee. It's been sent out amongst the staff. I've received no comments back from anybody. This is also not set in stone. This is, as we're going to do next June, we're going to even take you next June, next year's calendar, and ask you to amend it and revise it. So it's just, the way it works is we ask for the first draft to be approved as the official calendar, for the next school year before this school year lets out. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, so this is the best draft as we have it, and it's very similar to next school year, is where we ended up anyway, after all of that, so.
Okay.
I just, I have the same small objection to the calendar that I had for the year coming up that we haven't experienced yet, right? So we haven't, we don't have the benefit of learning from this new calendar yet, because now we're looking a year and a half down the road. But the start date on the Friday, I still, I still think that that should be a Monday start, not a Friday start, because it's disruptive to your families, end of the summer. Be nice to have that weekend, not have to be home for a Friday start, and then, now you got the weekend, and then you're coming on Monday.
It's just a numbers game as you count, count back.
I get it.
That's where it falls.
I get it.
I know.
And as we set the priorities, the priorities of keeping breaks and long weekends aligned with our partner elementary school districts took precedent over the day starting on a clean week. And the way this is structured, that first day is kind of a disjointed day anyway, so it allows everybody to come in, get their feet wet, get organized, get set up, to get a weekend to go away, and then we start up clean.
And it was the argument in favor of doing it in the first place, and we haven't experienced that yet, so I look forward to going through that and then seeing --
If it goes horribly this year, we can always come back and amend it.
Seeing how people, people respond to it, that, that was, other than that, I'm very much in favor of the calendar that we have coming up for this year, and then this reflecting similarly.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with this.
Any other concerns?
I think I asked this before, Hank, but, you know, the first semester is 85 days, the second semester is 90 days. So you got a whole week longer in the second semester. I mean, can we perform the same curriculum in the first semester compared to the second semester?
Second semester is when all the state mandated testing happens. So you lose days in the second semester anyway, so they end up being closer.
I remember it was like, effectively, it was like two, two-day different or something like that.
You probably gave me that answer last year, and I probably just forgot.
Dr. McDonald probably gave you that answer last year.
That's true. I mean, I'm going to state for the record my objection to this calendar. I still think we should not be starting this early. I still prefer to start after Labor Day, but I am not in the majority in that opinion, so as far as the draft calendar goes, I don't think I have any objection working off that premise.
I'm assuming the earlier start is getting us out a little bit earlier, like you never, yeah, I don't know.
This year, we end on June 8th as our last day of attendance, with graduation on the 9th. Next year and the year after, it ends before Memorial Day.
That Friday before?
The big push was originally to --
Finals.
Have finals.
Finals before Christmas.
Before Christmas, before holiday.
Finals, you go into Christmas clean with finals. That was the, that was the driving force.
Well, and more than just finals, the semester's over.
Semester's over.
The semester's over. You get a clean break between the two terms. So students gear up, they go through a semester, they get two weeks off, they come back rested, so it was our staff, and we have basically two years in one year.
I thought they took finals after --
They won't next year. Next year, everything's done.
This coming year, it won't be.
We waited a year and a half. This is coming up, no, this will be the year.
Yep.
This will be the first year of that new schedule.
This is, I mean, all of this will be great to, I mean, your concerns, the current concern I stated about the Friday, and then just, you know, these are, we've had, we've done a lot of studying, we've gotten a lot of input, and I, you know, I honestly thought that we, we did a pretty transparent job and a lot of reaching out to get input on the calendar that we have coming up. So I certainly hope that anybody who feels they didn't have a strong voice in that has voiced their opinion this time, and it'll be good to go through the process we're about to go through and, and learn from that. Hopefully, presumptions are good.
That is one of the challenges of the calendar committee next year, since we've built our priorities. Next year, that committee will be surveying students throughout the year, families throughout the year, to find out what they think of this schedule. And although, it's hard to turn a calendar on a dime, right, because we're already talking about the 2018-19 calendar, we'll gather information over the course of next year to, to shape the 2019-20 calendar, based on what we hear.
So have our sender districts started their classes earlier also?
It depends on the sender district. Some of the partner districts have an earlier start calendar, some do not.
Because they were --
They each set their own.
The districts that they're feeding into as well, other than just ours. Remember, everybody else has done this except for us.
Yes, we have some, some of our partners that their other partner high school
Right.
Has been on an early start schedule for a while, so they have also been. Others have not.
Well, is this encouraging because they can see that, you know, we're doing it again in 1819, to move in that direction?
I don't, I don't seek to have them move to match us or us to move to match them. I think we need to do what's best for our students, and they need to do what's best for theirs. There's many school districts that have partner districts across the state that do not have similar start dates. That's not uncommon.
I don't know if any of you've had conversations with other board members from other districts and other, but the anecdotal feedback I've gotten is that 58 in particular is not interested in changing because of an air conditioning issue, and they're just not going there, so.
Was in a meeting with their superintendent today, and she made that very clear.
There you go.
And 68 is changing, but the point is, we've already approved it.
Yes.
And so.
But I know 61's going to follow our schedule.
As a 68.
But, well, not to rehash, I'm not, we're not going to rehash.
No, I just, we're going to go through the process, and it'll be interesting, I mean, what, your concerns might come, might come up.
See what comes out of it, yeah.
And then may not, it may not, maybe.
As long as I'm superintendent, I'm happy to gather feedback, and then we adjust accordingly to the feedback that we hear.
What works for, for everybody, so, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Moving on to Freedom of Information requests.
One received and responded to.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Before we do take a vote, I would like to point out about E, the SASC Board of Control Governing Board Appointment Resolution. It'd be me. So.
You'll also read the rest of them.
You want to do, okay, so we'll read the rest and do. Thank you to everybody who did respond, or those who thought they responded to me.
Yeah.
For the Policy Committee, we have Dan and Rick. Dan Nicholas and Rick Pavanato will serve on the Policy Committee. Mike Davenport will be a representative to the IASB Governing Board and Delegate Assembly, as well as the National Affiliate of NSBA. I'm going to be the SASC Board of Control and Governing Board. Don Renner will continue to be a representative to Lend. And Sheryl Fuller and Terry Pavicich will be our liaisons to District 99 Education Foundation. Don is going to continue on as a private citizen, and therefore, will not serve as a board meeting.
There's a problem there, because I don't think all three of us can be at a meeting at one time.
You can, as long as you're not representing the board.
Representing the board.
Well, I think that's a fine line.
As long as you don't, I mean, just like anything else, as long as you don't have discussion about school board business, we're allowed to be in the same room together.
Can we, the concern is that if you have more than two school members, it's the open meeting, can we just double-check with legal?
Yeah.
We'll check with legal.
What's Don on before I sign up for it?
I've always, I've been on a, I've been a board member of the foundation even before I became a board member for the Board of Education, so I just continued on. Terry's serving as a liaison of the Board of Education, whereas I'm attending as a private resident.
As a private citizen.
But there was an interesting case that came down just last week involving the College de Page Foundation, and, you know, whether or not they were subject to FOIA. And the foundation had contracted with the College de Page to handle all of their charitable fundraising activities. And by doing that, the foundation was deemed a governmental body that was subject to FOIA. So it's, it's an interesting question that Terry has, you know, and I think you can make points on either side. It's probably not a bad idea to check with our council.
And we will do that.
We also need an alternate on the SASC board.
Oh, we also need an alternate on the SASC board.
I can agree.
Terry will be my alternate again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, is there any other part of the consent agenda that any other board member would like to discuss before taking the vote? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the Personnel Report Appointment Certified, the Personnel Report Retirement Classified, the Personnel Report Termination Classified, the Financial Pages, the SASC Board of Control Governing Board Appointment Resolution, the Approval of the Treasurer's Surety Bond, and the School Calendar 2016 through 17, amend to drop emergency days, as well as the Approval of Student Tours.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as you read.
Thank you, Terry.
Second. Sorry. Got to be fast, right?
Terry Pavicich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sorry, Sheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, thank you. The consent agenda passes. We're going to now move on under Recommendations for Actions. A proposal's been received from JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., for the purchase of $1,915,000 in general obligation bonds to be issued by the district pursuant to Section 17-211 of the School Code for the purpose of altering and reconstructing school buildings and purchasing and installing equipment therein for fire prevention and safety, energy conservation, and school security purposes, and that the Board of Education would consider the adoption of a resolution providing for the issue of said bonds and the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest therein. District Controller Mark Stalen will summarize the pertinent terms of said bonds, including rate of interest, purchase price, and tax levy for said bonds. We'll open to discussion.
Okay, so we had the bid opening today purposely as close to the board meeting as we could to take out a volatility aspect. The market is bouncing around quite a bit. The tweet comes out, and something can change in the market at any moment, and we didn't want to have any issues where somebody had to bid on a Friday for, and open, and have it wait till the following Monday for approval, because things can happen in a couple of days that would change in a negative way, and they would have to allow for that. They'd have to put some pad in there to allow for contingency. So if approved tonight, and I'll go through those in a little more detail in a minute, I will actually sign off on a letter saying that the board approved it tonight and give it to the low bidder, which will lock in it, because he only guarantees it for a day. So it's a, it's that kind of a market that we're in. We did send it out. We do what's called a privately negotiated bid, but we do, we do it as a blind bid, so we sent this out to four different banks in the Chicago area that deal with municipal bond purchases. And also, we send it to Worth Township School Treasurer, who happens to, he'd be the treasurer for 15 school districts and has a large, a lot of investing power. Actually, was one of the first offices, it's a different treasurer now, but one of the first offices where I realized we could go this route, and going privately and locally, you get interest by your local bankers in, in the community. And so the current Township Treasurer in Worth Township is Terry Labella, is Mr. Terry Labella. He actually bought our first issuance for $3.5 million. This time, he didn't come in as a low bid, so he didn't, he didn't, it didn't work out for him this time. But the low bid, we had three responses to it. One bank, BMO, we just found out actually, because we asked why they didn't bid, they're, they're just holding off on anything in Illinois. They're Canadian, BMO's bank in Montreal, Ontario, and they're, from their distance, Illinois looks like a bigger risk than Wisconsin. So they're just not bidding in Illinois. So they're just not bidding in Illinois. And we also knew that for any of the bankers that are really broad national purchasers, they call it the Illinois tax. There's a factor that they add to bids for interest, just interest rate risk because of the state of the state. And so going locally with banks that know us and that I have relationships with, or they know me or they know our district and our financial situation, we have been getting a better bid. In fact, the low bid is JP Morgan Chase Bank. Their bid is 2.309%, which we were just trying to keep it under 2.5%. The Treasury, seven-year Treasury bond, this is a seven-year bond that we're issuing. Treasury bond today was 2.15%, so we're really very close to what some people call an interest or a risk-free investment in the Treasury bonds. And we do have costs of issuance built into this cost, which the US Treasury doesn't have built into theirs. So this is a very competitive price. I'm really happy to see 2.309%. The Worth Township Trustees of Schools bid was 2.994. MB Bank was 3.173. And we didn't get a bid from Wintrust, and we haven't been able to find out why, but we would have expected Wintrust to invest or at least take a shot at this as well.
They don't like bussing.
But we're delighted with 2.309%. So one thing that's, we also do by using this process and negotiating, we don't have to issue an official statement or an opinion on it. That saves us about $20,000 to do that this way. So that really helps our, what they, we call the true all-in cost or all costs of issuance. Any legal fees, any things. JP Morgan actually had a stipulation in their bid to have, to pay for their own attorney's review on the documents that we sent them. It's just a way of keeping out of their interest rate. They could have built it into their bid if they wanted. So that was unique to them, but they're still the lowest, including that consideration. So we ask the board to approve the purchase, or the issuance of the bonds and the low bid made by JP Morgan Chase of 2.30. And there's a, you're going to have to read the whole title of the resolution. But we also got a corrected version or an updated version of the resolution because until we knew who the bidder was and the actual costs and the cost per year of interest, we couldn't finish that part of the resolution. So that is, you now have that in front of you or in the packet. There was a preliminary one that was issued along with the agenda earlier this last week.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about it or?
Uh-uh. Very good.
No questions? Okay, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution providing for the issue of $1,915,000 in general obligation limited school bonds series 2017 of Community High School District Number 99, DuPage County, Illinois, for the purpose of altering and reconstructing school buildings and purchasing and installing equipment therein for fire safe, fire prevention and safety, energy conservation, and school security purposes, providing for the levy of a district annual tax to pay for the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the said, the sale of said bonds to JP Morgan Chase Bank NA.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Rick.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Terry.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Approval of student discipline code? Is there any more discussion?
Just exactly approving what you saw earlier on the meeting.
You have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the changes to the student discipline code as presented.
Thank you, Dan.
I'd second the motion.
Thank you, Dan.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sheryl Fuller.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion carries. Award of bid Legion Baseball Field Safety Netting.
I'll turn this over to Jim.
Thanks. Okay, quick one tonight. We put the documents together for Legion Field Safety Netting. It's North High's home field for their baseball teams. We had eight interested vendors. This project might sound familiar because we did pretty much the identical twin at South High last year. At Legion Field, the first baseline is parallel to the parking lot, so we want to get some safety netting up on that side. Also, on the third baseline, there's batting cage over there, people sitting over there, so we'd also like to get some safety netting on that side. As you know, we already are doing the backstop at Legion Field. We're doing some fencing past the third and first baselines. And we're also doing some walk path from the parking lot. So a lot going on at Legion Field. So looking forward to this. Good news is the same vendor that won the bid last year won it again this year. And we are very pleased with the results that they did over at South High. So our bid price is within our budget estimate for this project. And we're looking for the board to approve the low bid submitted by North Shore Netting for installation of safety netting at Legion Field in the amount of $79,900.
I can't believe the difference in pricing. I mean, that to me was...
Seventeen thousand, almost seventeen.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big deal.
So moved.
Go ahead, Dan.
Second.
I'm going for Sheryl next.
You don't have to second. Second.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Sheryl Fuller.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Now on to the award of the bid for the marching band instruments for South High.
I'll turn this over to Mr. Stalen.
All right, this one is mine. The two department chairs, Brer Teague and Glenn Williams, worked very hard to make sure they have all the things for their kids that they need. And we have fantastic fine arts programs that he's building. They worked, had worked out several years ago, a kind of a long-term plan for larger instruments, large cost items, and actually physically large instruments. Just so that we knew it was coming in advance. And typically, it's $25,000 or so a year. But there's these two years in a row, we knew, the last year and this year, we would have some bigger costs. Actually, originally estimated the cost to be $81,000 for each of these two years. But we were able to, by using a bid process, keep it tighter. And it's, I think they might have just been over a little, padded it a little bit too much because they were going into the future year. They didn't know what the cost would be in future years. So last year, it was North High's turn. And what the other building does is they don't order any of their instruments that year. They just let one building take it over. And part of the reason is if they order more of the same type of instrument, they can get a better deal by a little bit in volume. So we had, it was South, South's turn this year. Next year, we'll go back to a smaller annual budget for this line item. But they had, we had, I think we had seven different bidders that came in. Very competitive bid. It's kind of a tight market. There was only a spread of $5,000 or so between the highest and lowest. The lowest bid was Washington Music for $63,021. These are just drop shipped at the building, so they come right from the manufacturer to the buildings. It is, in this case, South Campus. And then there's another vendor that will come over, actually that inventories the instruments, and will take them back and actually check them out a little bit and then bring them back to South. So, but this is just for the actual purchase and the guy won it by $16. It was really close.
Music and arts.
I had a conversation with, actually both, just in case. And the first, Washington Music understands the bid, he understands the scope of the bid properly. And so he'll, we believe he'll come through. And we did, he did check it this week and they're still in stock at the manufacturer. So unless something changes in the last couple of days, it should be, should not be a problem to make an August 1st delivery, which is required.
Thank you. Do you have discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsible bid of $63,021 from Washington Music to provide 23 marching band instruments for the 2017-18 fiscal year.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Sheryl.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Sheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Approval of the 2018-19 school calendar as we discussed earlier today?
Make a motion to approve the 2018-2019 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sheryl Fuller.
Aye.
And Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Approval for recommended textbooks to go on display?
I'll turn this over to Gina.
We have two textbooks we'd like to put on display. Both are for our personal trainer certification course, which we will run next year for the first time. Board approved it back in December. Both books are integral to the course and will come back in July with any comments that the public made and presumably recommend approving the two books.
Thank you. Comments or motion?
I move that we put these two books on display to get approval for them. I guess. Or do I have to read the whole thing?
No, you're good.
You're good. Sheryl, second.
Thank you. Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Sheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to new business, just a reminder that we'll have a June 5th workshop meeting.
No work.
Is that going to be canceled?
We're recommending, as an administration, to cancel that meeting.
Thank you. So we'll, and we've got, I know an email came out about a replacement date.
So we're looking at June 6th, but that date has conflicts. So we're now June 26th, which is a Monday for the IASB workshop with Barb Tony. Does that date work for everybody? Because then I'll snatch it before somebody else does.
Can't make the 19th.
We're canceling the June 5th workshop.
Board workshop, the normal board workshop.
The normal board work, okay.
Yep. And then looking to add the June 26th special workshop. That one is with a representative of the Illinois Association of School Boards, which is your professional organization, and therefore happens entirely in closed session.
So there will be no meeting on the 5th? And if indeed this goes forward with the 26th, that will be an entire closed session, so.
I'm just wondering, should we leave the 5th in case we have a vote on?
I wouldn't. We'll call a special meeting if we need to.
Okay.
That's a workshop anyway. Typically, you don't have action on it, so.
But I'm just saying, it's a night that, you know, we already have available. You know what I mean?
If we need to get together to approve a contract, it would be a very short meeting.
Remember, we had a mini-meeting once before graduation.
Right, right.
Right.
Something, so I'm sure we could do that sort of thing again.
On that Friday.
Okay, moving on, is there anything else? Hearing none, we'll move on to the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to Communications and Announcements. Do you have anything to update on, Don, for Lend?
We did, we did have our Lend breakfast, where presenters talked on a range of subjects. Transgender issues, issues with regard to curriculum at College de Page. Gina also attended the Lend breakfast. Immigration issues, of course. Peg Agnos, the director, gave a, I would say, a pessimistic outlook as far as budgetary issues at the state level. It was very informative. I thought it took a lot away from the meeting. Gina, do you have anything to add on curriculum?
No, I thought it was really interesting. A lot of what we, they reported from CO3 is exactly what we know already.
Mm-hmm.
That was good.
So, yeah.
Thank you. I have no report on SASC. Do we have anything on the foundation?
No.
Don, no? I know we don't have anything on IASB.
You don't have no report on IASB, but I will take advantage of the moment here just to mention that you might recall that the, that the College and Career CSS Department at South, in order for them to get their ramp recognition, they have meetings and an advisory council. And somebody from the school board needs to be there. So I went, again, just this last Friday morning. And it was a nice meeting. They had some parents there, students there. And hopefully, things will happen at North in this regard, too. So fantastic, fantastic counseling program at South High. And I think the meeting was great in terms of getting feedback from the students and parents about how the counseling staff can further help with college readiness and scheduling and what have you, so.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, parking lot?
We did, we did follow up on the question about random drug testing for activities and athletic participants. We surveyed, sent a survey out to all of our local peers. Twelve responded. Of those 12, only one does testing at a cost of $50,000 per year.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
And how many students do they test?
I don't have that exact number off the top of my head. But administratively, looking at it, we didn't feel that we were, we were not charging forward with this as a recommendation.
Okay. Can I suggest that maybe at the policy committee, you talk a little bit more about this?
Sure.
Maybe bring it back.
Bring in the actual data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe pop it up again.
Okay. Anything else?
What's, Hank, what's the status of having a student representative on the Board of Education?
Yes, this month, Janice, Ed and I are talking through the details. They've been talking to other local school districts that have student representatives on the board to just get their practices, documentation, those kinds of things. And then we hope in June to come back with, this is the process that we're going to follow.
With the idea of maybe September of the next school year, we would start that process?
Somebody would be here.
Okay.
October, or August or September, one of the two, depending on how quickly we can identify somebody and get them on board.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none then on, we're not having this, we're not having this.
We're canceled, yeah.
June 9th will be graduation. And June 19th, we will have our business meeting at 7:30 here in the ASC.
There's, just in the upcoming board meetings, it says A. June 5th and then June 6th?
Neither of those are currently.
Okay, all right.
5th was the board meeting.
Because I know we canceled the June 5th. I didn't know we had a June 6th.
That was the special meeting with IASB.
We would have added June 6th tonight. However, we canceled that and moved it to, before it was approved, it was canceled and moved to the 26th.
Okay.
Try to keep up, Dan.
All I know is I don't have to be here.
Not on the 5th or the 6th.
Do you do on the 9th?
The 9th, the 19th and the 26th.
Okay.
Thus far.
So far.
No question? Yeah, we'll talk to you.
Yeah, we'll send you the details.
We'll send you the details because you'll have, you'll come here to get gowned and go on. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.